Well, welcome to Milford Town Hall and I am honored and privileged to be the moderator tonight for the 2020 Selectmen informational session. We have a raucous audience here tonight, so I'm very excited and we want to thank you all for participating. The format tonight is going to be a very congenial one. I will have the candidates introduce themselves and we will have an opening statement from them as to who they are. I'll have a series of questions and then at the end we'll have closing. Tonight is a night to get to know the candidates. As a longtime civics teacher here in town, I've always believed that anybody willing to put their hat in the public arena and run for office is one of the greatest, most civically virtuous things you can do in our town and it's what establishes what I call the communitarianism of the fabric of our culture here. And being part of the community and offering to do this is very, very noble and I appreciate all of your efforts and I wish you all the best. You know, obviously, it is today, this year, we have two open seats for consideration.
I can fix that.
And so we do have two open seats for consideration and five candidates. Also, just so you know, we also will be rebroadcasting this. This is live right now, but it will be rebroadcast on Granite Town Media as an audio-only version of tonight's forum. And over the next few days, there will also be Granite Town Media's podcast, Inside Milford. And a forum for the candidates for the school board will actually be next Friday on the 28th at 6:00 in this room as well. With that said, I want to welcome all the candidates and I want to start over here with Mr. Johnson and if you'd like to introduce yourself to the viewing audience.
Sure, thanks. Good evening, everybody, here and online. My name's Jeff Johnson. I've lived here in Milford for 16, almost 17 years now. I've had three kids here. They've been through the Milford School System. They've all graduated, thank goodness. I have a couple of dogs, too, just for, if you want to come by and get barked at. And I have a third grandchild on the way. And as a profession, I've been an engineer. I have a bachelor's in electrical engineering and a master's in computer engineering and I'm a chief engineer at this point in my career.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
I'm Mike Thornton. I want to thank all of you who are here and those at home. I am a product of Ohio's school systems, but I've been in Milford for the last 20 years. So I've come to another town fairly well. I serve on the zoning board of adjustment for the last seven years. I'm on the community emergency response teams here covering Milford, Wilton, Amherst, Mont Vernon, and Lineboro. So we are a diverse group of volunteers. We go out and teach how you respond in emergencies. My website will be going live tomorrow, MikeLT.org. You'll be able to see who I am there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Duziak?
Thank you. My name is Laura Duziak and I've been a resident of Milford for 32 years. I live here with my children, Mason and Molly, and our Newfoundland named Olive. I work as a family law attorney in Amherst and I am looking for your support as I run for a second term on the board.
Mr. Freel.
Hello, everybody. My name's David Freel. I've been a resident of Milford's in a couple of different times. I was born and raised on Valhalla Drive for zero to six years old and then we moved to Amherst when I was younger and stayed there and graduated at Milford High Schools because we had Milford and Amherst combined. I then moved to Merrimack and lived there with my wife for seven years and then we came back and moved back into the Milford area and I've been there for 23 years. And then we live on Stable Road up off of Panima Hill. I'm an electrical contractor. I own my own company. My father started the company in 1971. I took it over in 2005 and since then have grown to be a little bit bigger than when my father had had the company. So I've kind of learned how to maybe adapt and go through the different changes and the times that we've been through over the last 30 years of business or whatever. I look forward to hopefully giving back to the town in that, a place that I call home. I donated time to working at the new amphitheater as well as over at the new ambulance building. We've done some stuff and I've tried to give back. So this is my step or my, one more step of trying to give back to the town. So I'd appreciate your support if I could get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sheehan?
Yeah, my name's Vanessa Sheehan. I'm a third-generation Milford resident. My grandmother, my mother, myself, we've lived in town all of our lives, so I have deep roots in Milford. I'm married almost 20 years, May it'll be 20 years, to my husband, John, and we have an 11-year-old son, John Samuel. And my degree is in broadcasting and communications and I currently work in a finance department in Nashua.
Fantastic. Wow, what a diverse group. So obviously, the big question that many people ask is why? Why do we do this? And so what I'd like to do is, in tonight's format, open it up for general discussion, so there's no particular order, but if you'd like to chime in on what prompted you to want to run. Now, I'll actually let our incumbent start because you're the incumbent, but then for the, after your start, if anybody else would like to chime in.
So initially, three years ago, I just wanted to give back to the community. My kids were getting a bit older. I had a little bit more time and I thought it would, you know, be something that I would have time to do now after serving one term. I feel like we've accomplished a lot on the board and, you know, I want to be a part of that. I want to see some of these projects through. I demonstrated, you know, an ability to work well with the other board members, staff, department heads, and basically I'd just like another three years to see some of the projects through.
Okay, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but just for the audience who are watching that may not know, just a real brief, what does a Board of Selectmen person do?
Okay. So the Board of Selectmen, I mean, we basically take care of the town's business. We have meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Sometimes there's a fifth Monday forum. We have an agenda. The public can come in. There's public comment portions, but on the agenda is basically everything that's going on at that time and we need to make decisions. Like I said, there's a public comment portion. They can comment on things that are on the agenda, things that aren't on the agenda, and basically be a part of what's going on in the town. We also set the budget and we negotiate contracts, you know, that the voters have given us permission to do. The town administrator obviously does the day-to-day stuff and keeps us posted. We've been fortunate to have a great town administrator since I've been on the board and we now have another one, so.
Thank you. And who would like to?
I will.
Absolutely, Jeff.
To be brutally honest about why, it's because Wade posted, "Step it up, people." But besides that, that being said, I, like I said earlier, I raised three kids here and I was a single dad for a long period of that and I, they're grown up now and I found myself in a position where I have more time. And in my daily work routine, I'm an interface between customers and the technical side of things. So I thought that throwing my hat in would be, you know, I have a technical background versus, you know, we just went through a whole diverse set of skill sets. So I thought that would bring something to the table when it comes down to the, you know, some of the issues that are in the Warren articles, these, you know.
And if I can follow up with you, as an engineer, obviously you look at things in a little bit more of a technical way.
Yes.
How do you think that might help you as a member of the Board of Selectmen?
I think, you know, when I, when I read into the articles, I see a lot of debate back and forth, you know, and it's this forum too, right? Like, it's townspeople. And not everybody needs, is an expert in everything and we are, everybody knows that. But when, for example, when you have a, you know, a company come in and give you an estimate on something and they are giving you a technical solution, it's nice to have that sort of background to say, is this a real valid solution? I mean, I do this on a daily basis. You always have to have a trade-off between cost, technical risk, and infrastructure.
Fantastic. Mr. Thornton?
I'm going to go ahead and play the experience card. As Ronald Reagan said, "I won't hold your youth and experience against you." Since 1979, I've been a computer engineer type, started in the Marine Corps as an NCO, served overseas, Vietnam, got out, furthered my education, finished college, and was a graduate of an ROTC program in Columbus, Ohio. In 1978, I went into the Air Force. I served at Hans Comer First Base on the program that lets the E3A AWACS be the great success it is. From there, I was able to parlay a request for my services to the Space Shuttle Program because I'd been successful in being the first program officer in the Air Force to put personal computers into people's hands and support them with training. I did that. I was very proud of it. It was an opportunity that we had the funding available that would have gone away otherwise. I was there at the right time. At the Space Shuttle Program, we do the same thing. We did it with what they call Tempest-qualified computers or you can do legally, you can do classified information on those systems.
And if I could follow, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. It is a matter of a step after step after step of experience. I had a computer shop here at 222 Elm Street for years.
And to follow up with you, it seems in your past travels, you've been around to a number of different cities, a number of different countries. Do you think the exposure to the, those places might help you in trying to determine what would be good for our town?
Yes. In the aspect, two aspects. Number one, the technical that we have is important. There's no getting around it. But you've got to be able to reach out and get people connected and involved and you've got to get them to tell you what's important to me. This is what I want the Selectmen to understand that we in the town want them to do. If we get more of that, we can be more responsive to the whole town in a more measured way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Freel or Ms. Sheehan?
Do you want to go first?
Sure. Yeah. So, living in Milford for, should I say my age?
If you want.
Over 40 years. I've seen Milford grow and change and, but what remains the same is Milford's unique charm and strong community. And working as a Selectman, you know, I want to work to ensure that we don't lose those qualities that we value in this town. And, you know, as Laura had mentioned too, that, you know, as our children are getting older, we have a little more time and it's always been a personal goal of mine to serve in town in some capacity and I felt like this, this is the time and so I stepped into the opportunity.
And if I could follow up with you, with a broadcast and major, that obviously gives you a good amount of soft skills that we are trying to teach kids to have and be able to play nice in the sandbox. And you also have a finance, you're working in an accounting place. So between being able to converse and to work with people and also look at numbers, do you feel that that will help the town?
Yes, because I love to communicate with people, but I've been working in finance now for, you know, over 20 years and learning how to manage finances well is very important and I think that the town needs that, you know, that we don't accrue a lot of debt that we pass on to our kids and grandkids. We need to be responsible with debt and seek efficiencies in town spending operations and with my experience, I think that I could help with that.
Fantastic. Mr. Freel.
So, just to give you a little heads up on to how I got into this position, but about three years ago, there was a Board of Selectmen that was leaving. I don't remember who it was. And we were having a, down at Chapel Tractor, we were having a conversation with, you know, myself and a few of the business owners down there and we were complaining about our taxes, how the taxes keep going up and how things are changing or things aren't getting done and we're just sitting around complaining. And, which happens a lot, right? I think everybody complains, they see their taxes go up, they're tired of seeing, you know, maybe money being spent where maybe it shouldn't be spent, but everybody's got a different idea on what's important. So I threw it out there. I was like, "Ah, I'm going to run for Selectmen." So it was like more of a, just throw it out there and everybody in the room was like, "You should do it." But at the time, I don't know if I said I had two daughters when I gave my introduction, but I have a daughter that's now 17 and the other one's 14. So a few years ago, you know, 11 and, you know, you know, 14, it just wasn't the right time for me, so I backed out. I didn't even proceed with it. And then, you know, some years go by, my kids are now not needing me anymore, the older one's driving, you know, I decided, you know, this would be a good time to maybe go ahead and, you know, try to give it a shot. When I heard that there was a couple of seats open, Kevin Federico actually reached out to me and said, "Hey, you should run and it gets you, start thinking again." Again, I think it's mostly, for me, it's about, I don't understand if five people can really control anything. Like, people are like, "Oh, lower my taxes. If I vote for you, will you lower my taxes?" I don't think five people can do that. The people that are out there voting on these articles, what does it? But then you hear people complain about transparency and all this other stuff and it'd just be nice to, I feel like that if you had somebody on the board, or I think any one of us would probably be good at it, you know, honestly. I think everybody here is a good person. I think that when people yell out about this transparency thing, I mean, maybe I'm rambling on now, but I'm just saying, I feel like if you, like what you were saying earlier, people could just come out and talk to the board. Come to the meetings. You come to a meeting, there's 10 people here. So I think it's important for everybody to get connected and everybody to come together in this whole thing, but kind of why I'm running for it. Go ahead.
And follow up for you, that you've obviously lived in town, unfortunately on Valhalla Drive, I'm on Wellesley, so I feel your pain. But, you know, obviously you've wired most of the town, if not helped build it. So how does that help in an advantage for you about connecting with the community?
Well, I can't really say that all my work has been done in Milford. We're very diverse about that, but, you know, what I can say about what I do, look, I've been in this construction business since I was nine. I didn't just come into it when I was 18 or 21. I worked with my father when I was nine years old. It was the first day on the job. I always remember it. I've been dedicated. I've been, I'm still an electrical contractor today, you know, 30-plus years later. I see a lot of different towns. I work in many towns in the state of New Hampshire. I mean, from here to Newburyport, Mass., to the Seacoast, you know, up north in the Lakes Region, and I see how different towns are. I see how Town Hall is different and the roads are different and, you know, some towns are better than others, okay? What I can bring, I don't know. Like, I feel like I'm dedicated, I'm a hard worker and I don't give up and I, you know, that's how, what I would probably bring to the board.
Okay, well, thank you. So let's talk about some issues in our town. So obviously, on the warrant articles coming up this year, there's a number of different ones and I'd like to start with, let's start with the library. As you noticed, the library has basically pared down their warrant article this year to about a $3 million article and it's been something that's been looked at many, you know, many times in the past years. Comments on your belief about the warrant article in relationship to the library? Anybody's open.
Yeah, I'm in support of the library project. I was impressed with the fact that they had pared it down. I think it was $5 million the last time it was on the warrant. Now it's about three. The trustees have done a wonderful job fundraising. I think they're at $687,000.
$697,000.
$697,000. The building is in dire need of repair and they've really listened to the community and what the community wants by setting up committees. And the feedback from the citizens is that they want more room for programming space, you know, additional bathrooms, a teen room. So, you know, that's coming from the community, it's just not what the trustees want. My understanding is that for a repairs-only solution, they're looking at about $800,000. However, what I believe their architect had told them is that if you're renovating a certain percentage of the building, state law would require that the entire building be up to code. So that brings it up to like 1.2 million and that doesn't address the need for the space issues. You're basically putting 1.2 million into it and you have the exact same library. So I think they've done a lot of work. I think they've done a great job. I think the library is always going to be competing with some other big-ticket item and I'm in support of it.
Okay.
Selectmen Duziak is right in the respect that if we do not do something with the building, it will continue to degrade, becoming more expensive in the future to renovate and bring up to a future code. The people on the board have done marvelous work. They've listened to the townspeople. The townspeople use the library. That said, there's got to be some very rigorous responsibility taken that we do what we need to do in a phased approach. The things that we need to do that are reasonable first and that will get the most use, that we will get the most use of as a town and the library will be able to bring in more of the townsfolk to support future involvement.
Would anybody else like to, Dave?
Sure. So on the library, I actually worked in the library for a few different years. I think you've seen me coming in and out of there and when Joel was in there. I don't work in there that often in the last couple of years. I've seen the structure. I've been in and out of the electrical room and the ceilings, on the roof. I'm not saying that the building definitely doesn't need work. Does it need $3.2 million? I can't agree with that. Honestly, I don't see, being in construction, how $3.2 million is needed for that building. And if you go to a lot of other towns, they're talking about doing expansion and I already think that our library is fairly large. If you go to the Amherst Town Library, it's fairly small. So if you go to some other towns, they don't even have libraries. So I'm not saying the library's not important. I think it's great for the kids. I think it's great. They just did a kid's room not even a few years ago and I know the electrical needs updating and I know I'm sure the plumbing needs updating and there's other things. But again, like Laura said, it's always going to get combined with another big-ticket item like this MAC base thing and then everybody's going to want to spend, you know, we can't spend $6 million in one year or, you know, or go for bonds on all that and then the taxes just keep going crazy. But if you wait for the green opener, the green light, if you wait for this opening where there's no other big-ticket item, we could be talking 10, 15 years from now. So is the library, does the library need to be fixed up? Yeah, I'm sure it needs some things. And I know in this town, being part of the amphitheater and being part of the library, the ambulance building, there's enough local businesses in this town that are willing to give some of their time up. Maybe we could try to work that way. I would love to see somebody look outside the box of, we have to go hire this big company out of state, spend $3.5 million when maybe we could do it for 1.8 or 2.3 and save $1 million in taxes. There are ways of saving in construction. I see the plan that the library put forth personally, it's over the top. The lighting is insane. It's beautiful. It looks great, but I don't know if it's really fitting in this town. It really does look a little over the top to me. So I think there's a way that maybe they could shave the cost down and I'm not saying that we don't need to vote on something, but it needs to be, I think, a little bit smaller.
Okay. Vanessa or Jeff?
Yeah, I would just add to that a little bit, that, that I grew up going to the library myself, so I can appreciate that part of it. But if you're doing big-ticket items, to me, it needs to come from necessity. If there's a major issue with the building, yes. But if it's to add some extra functionality that may not be necessary, I'm not really going to be for that. But it's, again, it's a trade to that whole thing, but I'm sort of caught in the middle between your, you know, the opinions here at the table where it probably could be looked at and yes, in construction, things are going to get out of hand real quick if you, you know, open up a can, take it open with a can opener and see what was really under there. But for me, it would only be out of necessity that we do something of that nature.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to say kudos for them, you know, trying to get it down, down, down to the lowest possible price to do these upgrades, so thank you for doing that, working hard on that. I think it's important to have a safe building because a lot of residents use the library, so I think it's important that it's safe and I think that it's going to be something that the townspeople are going to decide come March 10th.
Okay. Another issue the townspeople are going to try to decide is our MAC base, which seems to be a hot issue. And right now, you know, I'm wondering about your thoughts on bringing it to the police department for about $2.4 million or keep it at MAC base for about $3.5 million? Thoughts and ideas on that? Go ahead, Mike.
The $2.4 to $3.5, I have not heard anyone say that if we keep it at MAC base on the third floor for the $3.5, we'll get more and better functionality. Haven't heard that said at all. It will be a more difficult thing to do destruction at the same time you're doing construction. That is, no doubt, part of the extra expense. At the police station, you have the benefit of a new structure, meaning new codes entirely, not touching the police station, requiring it to be raised to a higher code level. The building and the tower are essentially integral. They are engineered to work together. The tower is built, if it fails, to fail straight down. We can't do that really on MAC base safety. If the tower fails, there is Town Hall and we need to be aware of that. There is really no height difference between here and there. They're essentially the same height, so the same functionality, but it is less expensive to do at the police station and I think you might agree with me that it would be provided better security at the police station.
Fantastic.
So, I agree with Mike. I'm in support of Warren Article IV because it solves Milford's communication problems at a lesser cost than Warren Article V does. And if you'll recall, last year at the deliberative session, the voters there had amended a warrant article to include for a study, a comprehensive study, to look at what would be best for Milford in terms of our emergency communication issue. And so that's what we did. The town then contracted with CTA, a completely independent organization from Virginia, to come and interview, you know, the users, the police department, the fire department in all of the towns. And if you read the report, they've, I mean, it's comprehensive and they've concluded that the best fit for Milford is a Milford standalone located at the police department with the capability of becoming regional. I mean, certainly, we would hope these other towns would want to join, but, you know, they found that MAC base, the existing site, when they looked, there's water damage, it's not secure, issues with HVAC. So it's less costly to go with Warren Article IV and it would solve our communication problems.
Okay.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to experience firsthand the issues with our communication dispatch. I was able to go out on a ride-along with one of the officers recently and I heard the dead spots as we drove around town. I saw their portable mic not working and, you know, we need to ensure reliable emergency communications for our emergency services because it is a matter of life and death to our officers and safety of our residents. In speaking to Chief Viola and Captain Fry, I see how Warren Article IV is the best way to go. to go. And there's a spot right there at the police station where they can build it. And yes, it is the cheaper of the two Warren Articles, so I'm in full support of number four.
Fantastic. Dave, Jeff?
I fall right in agreement with the opinion on the table on that. Same thing, it makes more sense on that side of town, well, not really that side, but over there, and doesn't cost taxpayers as much. The communications thing is key around here, I guess, for first responders and all that. So I can't not say no at that point. It's a critical function of this town.
So on, this whole thing is kind of interesting to me because I was at the deliberative session a year ago when this first thing came to light, right? It was like a two and a half, three hour, everybody's up and arguing about it. And we all, well, it got reworded, right? So it got reworded to the 85,000 dollars. I didn't personally want to spend 85,000 dollars just to be back knowing that we're going to spend 2 million dollars. Personally, me, I say last year, we should have just did it. But no, we spent 85,000 dollars, and we're all in agreement on that. And then this company that is a third party has nothing to gain from it. Comes in and says what they found, which is this new system, not MAC Base. It's the best thing for the town moving forward into the future, not just right now, but into the future. I understand this MAC, okay, I'm not, okay, I can't really say I understand. What I don't fully understand is how Mont Vernon and Wilton, yes, they're our neighbors, and I'm not saying they're not important, but at the end of the day, we're Milford taxpayers. We're worried about Milford. And if they don't want to jump onto the new system, then let them get their own system. That's how I feel about that. So we go and we spend the 85. This comes out, and we still spent another three hours at the deliberative session going back and forth because somehow, somebody comes on and is able to do a petition article for this crazy amount, which confuses everybody. If you talk to anybody in this town, everybody's all, what happens if we vote yes on four and five? How five even got on there? How MAC Base was able to just slide in a small number? And thank gosh, somebody did stand up and change the number, so now it reflects more like what it would be. But to the 120 taxpayers that were in that building, they knew what was going on, but the 16,500 or whatever we have in this town still have no idea. So I commend the board for getting it done. I personally think that it should have been done 10 years ago. And we are starting to do all these articles now, I think, that are more, what are they doing now? They're doing like, we're saving 40,000 a year. What do they call it, capital reserves? I think that's great. And if they had done capital reserves, knowing that the system was going to go outdated in 10 years, maybe if we were putting 50,000 dollars a year for 10 years, you'd be sitting there with half a million dollars with something to go on. Instead, we're always sitting here, spending our money last minute, and then, and nobody wants to spend the money. And then it goes on and on and on and on. And then 10 years later, the costs go up 20%.
Well, the board has been doing capital reserve very well. When it builds up to a certain point, some of the select board wants to give the money back to the taxpayers. That's good. It also means later, we need to borrow that money at an interest rate. So as a taxpayer, as a person who tries to find a good means of looking forward to the future, I think it would behoove us to retain some of that money and allocate it and begin to program it towards the preliminary studies. Get all our ducks in a row. Get our political, we're 71% of MAC Base, I think, according to the MAC Base folks. And that means while we're a great majority of MAC Base, we weren't in the past all of it. If this goes forward, we will be all of it. We will carry the entire load.
Does anybody else want to comment on anything that somebody said today? Okay. Let's move on then to our solar issue. Right now, Brox, we're looking at maybe putting solar panels that, over the next almost 40 years, could net the town roughly about 9.5 million dollars with an initial 25-year contract and five-year renewables after that. Thoughts that you might have on that? And I know Laura and Michael had started off the last ones. Would anybody like to start off this one?
Yeah. Well, sitting in on some of the Board of Selectmen meetings, I've started to understand a little bit more about the solar farm and was able to sit down with Mark Bender to get the history behind, you know, the land and purchasing the land when the town did that. And, you know, right now, you know, we have the land and nothing's being done. And the solar farm wants to just take a small portion of the land and use it. And to me, I see it as a win-win. You know, the town is going to get revenue from that. And, you know, the solar farm, the solar company is going to be doing their work. So I'm all for a win-win.
Okay.
So I'm in support of the solar farm because anything that can bring in any kind of revenue to the town is great. I don't know much about it, though. I have to say that. Like, I know about solar, and I know what some costs are involved. I don't know anything about a big farm. And I'm leery whenever we talk about 40 years because I'm gone by the time this thing even like, you know, comes due and the town gets the land back. So I think it would be good for the town. I don't know how much land, I wish I knew a little bit more about that. You know, it's good if there's a little bit of land left over somewhere, like if we needed to use it for something, or if the town wanted to sell off a chunk of it. Maybe a school. I don't know. Like Jacques School is, you know, personally, I think it should move into a new location, maybe a new school, and maybe make that a parking lot. I don't know. Just, these are some ideas that I've thought about. But, you know, if the whole, I don't know if it's all the property, if it's only a small chunk, it's good. If it was the whole property, mm, I would want to know a little bit more about it. But I'm definitely in favor of something that's not making any revenue for the town, where you can make that much money. I mean, it is over 40 years, right? So don't think you're getting like 9 million dollars like that. You know, you're going to get, what is it, 40,000 dollars or 150,000? I don't know exactly the numbers. I was looking at it the other day. It ramps up as it goes because that's when I'm sure they're starting to make some money on it, so they can probably pay a little bit more. But I still think it's a great idea to get something out of nothing.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
According to the town website, I commend it to you. In the late 90s, there was an offer to sell the town about 320 acres. And the school board went in and bought 50 acres, the Heron Pond School. So roughly 270 acres was brought forth as the Brox property. And the town, the selectmen of the town tried diligently to market that property. The success was a resounding, not much. So when the solar came forward, they began to research it with quiet and very thorough grace. I know about solar. If you look at my house, the roof is different. It's covered with solar panels. I don't ask any of you to buy my electricity. I use it all because they wouldn't give me what it's worth that I produce it for. So I'm not profiting from you. I think it's a good idea. It doesn't cover a massive part of the property. The company has moved forward with some property, a private property, off the Brox site in addition. So they're offering part of that back to us to use and still giving us revenue. I think it's a great winner. The only thing I would have liked to have done is put buildings under the solar panels because you can't reverse that and profit thereby. That said, the selectmen had no interest in raw land, and the taxpayers had no interest in developing the tax, the Brox property, so that it would be more marketable.
Mr. Zack?
So yes, I'm in support of the solar project as a way to bring in revenue. That's the purpose of the Brox properties, is to bring in revenue. And over the course of the lease, so there's a lease that we signed in September. We just signed a pilot agreement two weeks ago. And that will generate income up to about nine and a half million dollars over the course of the lease. The lease, like you said, it's a 25-year lease, but there's an option to extend that three times for five years each time. And it is only a small, I know Dave said that he was concerned about how much land. It's only a small portion of the town land that they're going to be using, and then they're going to be releasing 90 acres back to the town, and we can do whatever we want with that land. So my thing is, there are no big industrial companies or anything beating down the door, trying to put infrastructure out there to have a business. So I think that, you know, this is a good fit for right now for the property.
And to follow up, do you think it's a good fit because of the type of business versus, like you were saying, there's no businesses knocking the doors down to have to improve on the infrastructure and so on?
Well, I think that, I mean, no, I mean, I would rather have Amazon out there, you know? But I think that the town would have to invest in the infrastructure out there to make something like that happen. So a solar farm doesn't need that type of infrastructure.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, but how long has this, and anybody can answer this, how long has this land been available for commercial industrialization? And it's gone by the wayside?
98, 2000 was the, from what I can read, was the original transfer of about 270 acres. And that's when the select board at that time began to enthusiastically market the property. And this is the first true interest that's been shown.
Oh, I agree with the solar farm as well. Anything sustainable is aces in my book. The only difference that I see with solar versus, well, I've seen it residentially too, is your ROI doesn't happen for a long time. So making the decision now...
And that means return on investment for the viewers.
Oh, yeah, sorry. My apologies. But so you don't really see any kickback until a long time from now. So it's great for the future of this town. Will we be here? Who knows?
I think in 40 years, we'll have a reunion. But speaking of the future of this town, and if you'd like to, maybe Dave or Jeff start this question off, parking seems to be an issue, especially in the downtown area. We have fine restaurants, we have fine breakfast places, but we do hear a lot about a lack of parking. And quite often, we hear the concept of a parking garage. Thoughts?
Okay, well, I think I brushed upon my little idea I had. But look, I'm just, once again, just a taxpayer, live in this town. I don't know where a parking garage would even look good around here. Maybe if you could blow out the Rite Aid near the post office, because how many Rite Aids does the town need? We have like three of them. But I don't think that's going to happen. But you've got to keep it somewhat local to the Oval. You have land at the library, but the library might need that for eventually a building or something. You can't ask them to give their land up. So I was thinking like Jacques is our, I was just saying, and look, a school would cost a fortune. But if you could get maybe an addition on Heron Pond, or use the land over there or something and put in a school over there, keep the kids together over there, and do something over, I don't know if that land is even, if you could put a garage there where Jacques is, but I would think you could do something. Bales is, I think...
It doesn't necessarily have to be a garage, but just extra parking.
Well, I was thinking, well, if you didn't do a garage, though, and you only got one level out of it, you're not going to get many parking spots, right? You need a pretty big chunk of land. So I don't know locally where you could really do that. You know, I mean, there's such a tight area downtown, you know? So you almost have to do at least a two-level structure, at least under and then above, right? And then maybe some solar panels on top.
It would be interesting. But let me tell you, let's get rid of the not invented here syndrome, and let's look at people who've been successful at other places. I had the great good fortune to live not far from Santa Barbara, California. And when I would go there, oh, it's going to be terrible for parking. State Street is a shopping mall, you know? Ice cream shops, candy shops, libraries, restaurants. What they did is they took advantage of the businesses that were a little further out, and they put two trolleys to work. And the trolleys circulated among the parking places, both in closer where the handicap places were and out further where the businesses welcomed to the people because if you had people parked in your parking lot, they were more likely to shop with you later at some point for some reason. It worked very well in Santa Barbara. Would it work here? I think it might be worth trying before building an ugly, concrete, utilitarian parking garage. I don't think they had those in the 1790s. I don't think it would be in character for the town, which is part of the select person's charge to keep the character of the town from changing too much, too quickly.
Does anybody want to comment?
Yeah, I believe that it's a real issue, especially for downtown businesses. In speaking with one of the shop owners in town, that was the major issue for their business. You know, I was taking a drive around town, just looking at some of the empty buildings that we have close to the Oval. There's an old gas station that's off of Clinton Street that's been abandoned for a long time. Over across the street from the police station, there was an old kind of like depot that I think Milford Lumber used to own. And just, you know, wondering, how long are these places going to sit vacant? And is it possible to maybe look into putting some public parking there? But it is an issue that I believe that we need to address and work with the local business owners in town to try to come up with an idea in how to fix this.
Right. So Lincoln Daly of the Community Development Department has been instrumental in setting up a parking committee with the goal to create a comprehensive parking plan for the downtown. And he has been working with the library trustees and business owners, you know, to try to develop a plan. And it's just in the initial stages. But, you know, everybody's aware that parking is an issue. We need to figure it out, and we need to figure it out sooner rather than later. I'm not sure how we do that, but Lincoln has a lot of ideas, and we're currently working with him on that.
Okay. Jeff, would you like to comment?
No.
Okay. Mr. Thornton talked about the fabric of our town and keeping up with the ideals of our town. When you look at our tax rate, which has increased significantly in this last tax bill, what ideas or what vision do you have over the next few years to try to lower that tax rate but still keep the values of our town?
So when I ran three years ago, that was my thinking, that taxes are so high, there's got to be a way to cut taxes, to lower the budget. And what I found from my first three years on the board is that our budget's pretty lean. We don't have department heads that are asking for these big wants. They're asking for things that they need to maintain, you know, the roads or whatever it might be. I think that Milford is a great town. We have a lot of services. And I think that we need to continue to fund the infrastructure and the equipment that's needed to keep being a great town. So personally, I don't see a way, and that was my goal, we've got to cut taxes, we've got to cut taxes, but we love Milford. Milford's a great town because of all the services that it has. And you've got to keep, you've got to keep funding the infrastructure and the services. So I don't have an answer for how to reduce the taxes.
Milford is a vibrant and living society. A lot of volunteers. Wade back there investing hours. Wade back there investing hours, days in the pumpkin festival. Reduce the cost, too. Okay? Why not ask more of our people to volunteer more, to give us the benefit of their expertise? To examine an electrical bid, is this reasonable? To look at what would be out in the out years, what can we do now to keep the library building from degrading further as quickly? Then, how can we spend responsibly and get the work that needs to be done and meet the current needs every year going forward without being a huge outlay in any one year?
Okay. Does anybody want to comment?
Yeah, so, you know, I think that it's keeping property taxes reasonable, you know, and working in finances, it's trying to seek efficiencies in how we do things. And, I mean, it kind of seems like that's all of our hearts and what we desire to do. And so, you know, just continuing to work. We have a great budget committee that works hard in keeping our budgets in order, and just working with them, and again, just being fiscally responsible. It's important.
I think that there's an opportunity at some point, well, my analogous view of this is that you get your paycheck, and then you spend it, and you just keep doing that. And your money's not really working for you. So I think that there's got to be an opportunity to form revenue streams that can augment the town and not have the town keep just pulling out of its own pocket, which effectively is your tax rate. So I think there's probably some ideas out there, whether it's to bring in local businesses that can sustain something like that. You know, I don't want to go as far as say, like, parking meters, but like, every other town around here does that when they get big. I'm not advocating that at all, it's just an example. But there's got to be business structure, I think, that actually supports the town revenue structure. And it doesn't seem to happen. It just seems that we kind of strapped all the time, and we rely on all the taxpayers to keep doing it. I mean, us being all of them, everybody in this room, and out there.
Obviously, you're going to be on a board with five people. However, do you individually have a pet project, something that you would like to see advanced if you're a member of the board? Is there a pet project that you would kind of champion?
Actually, I didn't really get to talk on the last one, so I think I'm going to, this might be one that I tried to go and put it together. So again, I think for me, it's about being very fiscally responsible. I'll agree with Laura. I think that we have a very slim budget, right? We're 15 million or change. I don't know what the actual numbers are here, but let's just cut to the chase. Our town needs 15 and a half million dollars. The school needs 40-something million. Forty-two? Okay, 42 million dollars. So the school is way more than what the town is. And the town, I'm not saying the school doesn't do an amazing job for this...
We need to get rid of that school.
Yeah, right.
Put a parking lot there.
Yeah. So there's, look, you take everybody's property value, divide it all up, and we're all paying supposedly equal tax. I think the assessment, assessments are definitely off, I think, for me. I think, you know, we have a very diverse, I think, town as far as residential. We have businesses, we have some very large businesses here. And, you know, there was a time where our taxes recently went up because the businesses' evaluation went down. And then who took the brunt of that? The taxpayers did. The residents who, you know, aren't businesses, that they're just on a fixed income, you know? And, you know, this town, and look, I don't know all the numbers. We have a lot of rentals in this town, which in the rentals have a lot of children, and the children are the ones bringing up the school tax, you know, the school taxes. So I feel like the people, like, if I rented an apartment here and I had four children, how are they paying their equal share of a person with one or two children or whatever? I feel like maybe the rentals, now, if you try to get the rental properties and try to tax them a little bit more, I think that's one avenue you could try to do. But then if you, that's a fine line, right? Because then the landlords or the people that own the land are going to raise their rents, and then people are going to leave the town. So you've got to figure out a way to make it work. But it can't always be on the residential housing side. It can't. And there's always got to be a way to shave money down somewhere or some way. You know, I mean, I'm all about, like, you look through the Warren articles, I love the fact that we're a small-knit community, and that we have parades, and we have the pumpkin festival, and we have all these things that are very important to make us a community. Those are important. And, you know, yeah, they raise our taxes, what, you know, 10 cents per thousand? I mean, it's minor, that's minor. There's other ways. I did hear recently from somebody that, of course, I wasn't on the board, so I don't know all the little things, but somebody on the board threw around the idea of possibly doing a vehicle tax. So everybody's vehicle in the town of Milford would get taxed an additional $5, $10, I don't know what it would be, 15, $20, right? So if you've got a 2 million car, I don't know, 500,000 cars in the town of Milford or whatever, I don't know. Who knows? Okay, 16,000, let's say 8,000 cars or whatever, you do $10, I'm doing the math in my head real quickly. But I'm just saying, there's a way to make a little bit of money, but again, you're taking it out of the people that probably are already taxed out. You know, like, there's got to be another way, you know what I'm saying? I just feel like there's got to be a way, and I try to work closely with the people on the board to try to keep it down, be fiscally responsible, and look at, like you were saying, look at every avenue that you could possibly save.
Okay, let me hold off on my pet project because Michael wanted to...
If I, if I read everything right, we've got about, about 350 businesses in town, when they counted at last in 17. If we brought more businesses in, it would dilute the load we carried. If we put a vehicle tax on, and let's call it, let's just say JP Pest Services, because you can see it from the highway, look at the number of vehicles they have. We start hitting them with all that extra money every year, they've got to pass it along, or they leave. That's my point. They leave. If they leave, we have fewer businesses to help us pay their taxes. I would like to see more suitable businesses in town. And I believe that you had a good idea, Mr. Moderator. When the school is not open, that's a good parking facility. Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, in a trolley, yes. Bring the people down to the Oval. Make something happen there. Let the businesses in the Oval run that. Let that be their baby. That's their business.
So you would have a private shuttle?
I would have them do the private shuttle, yes.
That's why I'm saying, it wouldn't be a town-funded.
No.
It would be a private shuttle from the coordinating businesses.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else want to comment on this topic before we move?
That's a great idea.
So pet projects that you would be interested in championing in our town?
I mean, I was going to say parking, but we've already talked about it, so...
Do you believe that that's one of the top issues that you feel from your constituents currently?
Yes. Parking, well, I mean, the major issue is resolving the emergency communications issue and seeing that to a conclusion, but parking is a big issue also. Other than that, getting the gravel operation at Brock's back up and running is a priority for me as well.
Okay.
Yeah, for me, I just, I'd like to come alongside and support small business in our community, especially the downtown area, as that's growing. I mean, Chronicle was here recently, and so, yeah, just, you know, starting like a downtown committee to come alongside those folks.
Okay.
I'd like to see some improved public transportation. It's rather funny to see it elsewhere and stop at the border, essentially. And there's, I think, a lot of residents could benefit from that. And then that would actually offload the parking situation. Something to think about.
I believe that the Brock's land revenue that's going to come in from the solar farm might be well invested in the infrastructure of the bare land that is there now to make it more marketable, to give our selectmen the opportunity to say to other businesses, this is ready. All you have to do is put the concrete down, put your building up, and go to work. They don't have to dig sewers. They don't have to put water in. They don't have to run electricity. They don't want to put solar panels on top the right way. But my point is, the bare land is extremely difficult, shown by 20 years of trying. And the other way around, with improvement that does not cost the taxpayers additional taxes, might be something that we could look at.
Okay.
Well, after having a conversation on the phone with another citizen in Milford, we were talking about the library, and actually, if the library doesn't pass, I might try to put some effort in to try to make it happen in another way. If we could try to work with local businesses and try to get some donations and get that done cheaper and more reasonable, you know, for the taxpayers and for the library and for the kids of the community. So I think I might take on that if I was to get on the board, maybe try to like, I don't know, I don't know if that's even possible for a board member, but maybe try to work with some different businesses. I have a couple in mind, and the person I was talking on the phone actually, you know, had a few other businesses in mind that I wasn't even thinking of. So I thought that would be good. And then also the roads. Like, for me, roads, our roads need help. I don't know what we can do about that, but I will be promising you that I'll be making visits to the DPW if I even, if I can even do that. I don't know if I do that, but I'm telling you right now, potholes in this town, I've got to end. So being responsible, if you're getting paid to do a job, you're going to do the job, I would hope. And if you're not going to do the job, we're going to make sure everybody knows you're not doing it.
This time of year, this time of year in New England, potholes are rather endemic.
Yes.
They're going to pop up because of the frost heaves. Typically, DPW gets to work when the blacktop plant opens, when it becomes available. And they go out and they pack the holes full, tamp it down, and that's when the repaving is done, mostly. So, yes, there's a time for doing that. In the winter, they put coal pack in, the ice piles hit it, and it pulls it right back up. It's a no-win situation, so that is true. The roads are bad this time of year, but at the end of summer, they're looking pretty good.
Would you be in favor of deputizing Wade Campbell as the moderator and the administrator of the Milford Residents Facebook page, which constantly gets postings of what the roads look like? Maybe he would volunteer his services to have a direct line to letting us know which roads are in horrible need of repair.
He does it for free now.
Well, I will say that, you know, people, you know, I'm the one to complain about the roads, and then people are like, oh, you know, you can call the DPW, but it's just too easy, Wade, with you, to be able to put it on the page. But I'll, I agree with you, they fix the roads, but sometimes it takes too long. Honestly, sometimes they're halfway through summer before some of these holes are being fixed. Okay? So I don't know, and again, I don't know, but I, that would be one thing.
And do you know if that's because they have a list of other projects that they're doing that they have to get to first?
There could be two. Again, I don't know, but that would be one thing I'd try to work on.
Okay. All right, so now I need to get a little sentimental with you. Many of you have lived in town almost forever. So looking back over the course of this town, what is, what is something that you would point to that you would say that you're most proud of being a resident of this town, in our town?
One word, spirit. The civic spirit, you've got the pumpkin festival, you've got the parades, you've got the involvement, you've got a vibrant select board, a board of selectmen, you've got library boards, you've got, you know, you've got people dying to get a job on the cemetery commission. You've got opportunity for anything you want to do here in town. Get some people together. Get some sympathy. Pull a commission together that you, if you have something that you're truly involved in, and do it. Nobody's going to stop you, especially if it's not costing a lot. Wade is bringing the cost of the pumpkin festival down.
Okay.
For me, I'm most proud of Milford's rich history. My great-grandfather came here from Italy, and he was a stonecutter at one of the quarries in town. And I just love going to the historical society and seeing just like the old pictures of people coming here and building this town. And that's what I'm proud of, you know, just seeing it over the generations and having my son here now. And he has a love, we walk, you know, the swinging bridge and the Oval, and just seeing my son enjoy the town just as much as I did when I was little. So, yeah, our rich history, most proud of, yeah.
I'd like to say that since I've been here, obviously not as long as some people, but I've seen the downtown, I'll just stick to that, but it's grown, in my opinion, over the course of time, but now Milford is almost regionally recognized. And it's just earmarked by, you know, politicians who want to come through here all the time. And it, you know, it's now kind of trailblazed for that, but also it's recognized everywhere. I can't tell you at one point where I used to say I'm from Milford, and where's that? And now, I just was talking to a colleague at work, he's, "Oh, I love the Oval," you know? So they, everybody knows what it is now. And I can't see that that wouldn't want to, you know, bring in new business and help the town even more solid, be more solid.
And I would echo what everybody else has said. I mean, Milford is a vibrant community. We have a lot of services, the blue bus, you know, there's band concerts on the Oval, the pumpkin festival, all the parades. You know, the political candidates come in to march in the parades. It's just, it's a very vibrant community.
We do have a challenge, though, one in particular. As you know, when our children graduate high school, the opportunity for a house for, what, an apartment, a little apartment? We need affordable housing, something like the teeny house, something that will allow our children to graduate here, get a decent job here, progress up, and stay here. We invest, as you've said, as you've said, a lot of money in our children, most of the town budget. And then to see them fitter away in the breeze, it hurt. To see my own daughter's products of Milford schools go elsewhere bothered me.
Would you, and this is an open question to anyone, obviously, the cost of housing, Mr. Freel had mentioned, there's a, in your eyes, would you believe that there's a disproportionate amount of residential versus rentals and such? And how would you maybe try to reconcile that as a board to try to offer affordable housing? Or is that a thing of the past? Is there no way, in your view, that Milford can do this?
Look, I don't, again, I'm in construction, but I'm not in the planning or zoning committee, and this is going to probably fall down on you since you're on the zoning board. But I think as a board member, and I think, does the board of selectmen even, this is going to come down to zoning, is it not?
Planning board, and then after the planning board, and after the professionals in the building, safety and everything, then it comes to the zoning board to help consider relief from something like that. So, no, not in the beginning.
Yeah.
But only later.
Yeah, and I just feel like, you know, you get big chunks of land, and people are like, oh, you know, it doesn't really, it doesn't really fit with a residential neighborhood. But boy, I could put a 30-unit apartment building right up there, and I can make my money that way. You can, you can try to maybe do some over 50 communities where there's less kids, so you can try to like cut back on the kids' costs going into the schools, you can try to get more of those communities. But again, you need land for that and good chunks of it. So when you're getting, I mean, you have to really get out there where the land is to really have that happen. there where the land is to, to really have that happen. I, I don't know how you could try to say, okay, no more apartment buildings. You know, I mean, the, it comes down to the land. And you have to have, you know, neighborhoods can, you know, you're not gonna run them up a mountain or something like that. They're, they're not gonna do that. So, I don't know. There's a lot of land still left in the town to do that, but I, I don't know as a board of selectmen if we could like cut back on that. You know, people buy the land and they have the right to do whatever they want with the land.
Within reason.
Within reason. But if I bought that land and I'm within the zoning commissions and there's, you know, and I want to put a 50-unit apartment building, I can't say, well, hey, no, you're not allowed to do that. I'm sorry. You're gonna have to build a 10-lot subdivision. So, that would be a tough one. I don't know if that's possible. But it would be good to try to, you know, like I say, try to get more businesses in town. I mean, I think we already have a good amount of businesses, you know. But I just think that we do have a disproportionate amount of rentals versus, I, I mean, I don't even know the amount of rentals. Again, I just feel like there are a lot of rentals in Milford.
There have been many built, of late, yes.
Yeah. So, I don't know.
Mr. Thornton?
I'm gonna say that we have a, a wonderful situation right now with employers like Hitzner up the street. Has anyone noticed the signs up to $36 an hour for appropriately skilled people? You can start with a high school diploma at almost $15 an hour, right? I mean, that's a nationally sought-after wage. We've got it right here. We've got the need. What's holding us back? We don't have the skilled people coming out of the high school and staying here because where are they going to live? Where are they gonna start developing a household? Where are they gonna start getting some equity on something they own instead of a rental, which they throw that money away every month? There, there are a lot of ways to dream. You can't build more businesses in town. That's my dream. Bring more businesses in, reduce our taxes, let the businesses help us carry the load, let the businesses attract our progeny, our high school graduates, give them good jobs, and keep them in town and let Milford grow.
Okay. Okay. Mike, Jeff, sorry. Okay. Well, I'm looking at our time and we're starting to wind down. Is there a topic that hasn't been addressed tonight that you would like to champion to say, this is something to consider, because this is a passion of mine as a member going forward if I'm selected to the Board of Selectmen? Is there a topic that you would like to address that hasn't been brought up yet?
I've already had my say.
Okay, perfect. At this point, then, it would be appropriate, we'll do our, we'll do our, our closing. And I think I will start with Jeff, if you'd like to address the audience and/or the television crowd.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out and listening tonight. I'm hoping that you take me into consideration for, for March. I think I could bring a lot to the table as far as kind of a technical backbone to come join the board, to balance things out.
Mr. Thornton?
I think I'm technically skilled and a man of my word. I gave my wife a pledge 37 years ago. And I'm still there. I'm still doing what I said I was gonna do. I'm still investing in our relationship. When I look at the flavor of this town, what has attracted me to this opportunity is the people who have been doing this before, the people who have done it and then backed away because of, it's time for somebody else to have a chance. Remarkable people. People like Bob Courage, people like Fletcher Seagroves, who, who invested so much of themselves into the town. It's our time. We need to do that. And you don't have to be on the select board to do it. You can all do it just based on, I want to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Ziac.
I'd like to thank you all for being here, both here and viewing at home. I feel that the board over the, my first term has accomplished quite a bit. And I would appreciate your support as I look forward to a second term.
Thank you. Mr. Frill?
Thank you for, everybody for coming out tonight and people at home watching. Again, I'm a dedicated person. I follow through with everything I say. I, I really just put it all out there. I don't hold back. If you want somebody that's just gonna say what's on his mind and listen to what you have to say, please feel free to vote for me.
Thank you. Ms. Sheen?
Yeah. I just want to thank you all for being here tonight. And just thank you all for your love for this town. You know, you wouldn't be here if you didn't have a heart for Milford. And, you know, as your selectmen, if you vote for me, I'd work to ensure fiscally responsible town spending and work with different departments, keeping open lines of communication, working together, work with small businesses coming alongside of them, and, you know, working to keep Milford's unique charm and, and rich history.
Fantastic. And before we close, I want some housekeeping, if I may. Please remember that in addition to tonight, it will be, this will be rebroadcast on Granite Town Media. And an audio version of tonight's forum will be made available sometime over the next few days on Granite Town Media's podcast, Inside Milford. Next week, there will be a candidate's forum for a school board on Friday at 6:00 PM on, on the 28th. But more importantly, on March 10th of, in a couple weeks, three weeks from today, at the Milford Middle School, we will have voting for both the town and the school issues. We're fortunate enough to live in a town where we actually have the longest voting hours from 6 o'clock in the morning to 8 o'clock at night. I'm sure many of you will probably be bearing the brunt of the, hopefully, somewhat of a seasonal warm, let's hope, where, you know, from 6 o'clock in the morning to 8 o'clock at night. So please, on March 10th, please mark your calendar. Obviously, the concept of getting out and voting and coming, casting your ballot goes a long way. I, I know Joan Dargie is in the audience tonight. And in talking with her last week, we had about 400 new people register, bringing us over 12,000 people in our town that are voting members. We also have same-day registration, where you can show up with an ID and hopefully an item of mail that has your address. If you don't, that's okay. You just swear an affidavit that you live in town. But the ID is the, the important thing. We encourage you to come out. We encourage you between now and then, please reach out to any of the candidates, both on the school board level and on the selectman level, if you have any questions or concerns that you want to have addressed. And they're obviously very accessible and very approachable, so please do that. But we want to thank tonight, this was a wonderful conversation of learning about the people who are looking to try to shepherd our town. So I want to thank you all for being part of it. And I wish you all the best of luck on March 10th, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.